Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education meeting, regular meeting of Monday, August 12th, 2019. Justin Callold, please.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Ms. Steph.
Here.
Mr. Amfield.
Here.
All members present?
We would all stand, say the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So there was a couple of them, new ones, kind of surrounding school safety, so I thought those were important. One of them is Senate Bill 147. These were introduced recently. That would establish an Ohio School Marshal Program to provide safety and security services to elementary and high schools. Basically, the Ohio Department of Public Safety would appoint a chief school marshal. That chief school marshal would then appoint 16 regional school marshals. They would be responsible for offering training and assisting in the settlement of safety protocols. The one thing to have on the bench is that if this passes, it would require school administrators to conduct emergency management tests quarterly instead of annually. But I think we...
We do a lot of, and I'll talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, that's what I thought, so I didn't know if that would really change much for us, but... And then the other one is House Bill 123. That one is the Safety and Violence Education Students for Safe Students Act. That one would create new curriculum requirements, requirements for dealing with threats, training requirements, requirements for student clubs. The curriculum wants students in sixth through 12th grade would be required each year to complete three hours of education, suicide awareness, and this is an hour each, and suicide awareness and prevention, safety training and violence prevention, and social inclusion. A lot of smaller points in there too, but one of the other ones that I wrote was that it would also something about a club for the students that want, I think it was just at high school level, but for the students to create a club that we would also kind of go towards.
Sort of like the ones we know.
Yeah, and promoting, you know, student leadership and things like that. And then the Ohio General Assembly did approve the budget. If you remember last time, I said it got postponed and Governor Duane signed it. A lot of key points on that. One thing I did see was that creates new funding for student wellness and success initiatives, so I thought maybe, I'm sure Justin probably seen it, but, you know, and everything we're doing as far as, let's talk about, is pertinent to us. That's it.
Next up, public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to? First up, we have the superintendent's report.
It's my pleasure tonight to introduce some of our new teachers that have been hired for the district, through the district and for the district. We have some extensive interviewing going on this summer, so we've had quite a bit of turnover, but extra positions and some turnover, so I'd like to start with Lori Kendrick. She's going to come up first, our part-time psychologist, and she's going to tell us a little bit about herself and her background and, thanks.
Good prompt, right?
Yes.
As I said, I'm Lori Kendrick. I actually retired from Amherst Schools in June of 2017. I was a school psychologist there for 30 years. So I bring that experience to you to help out with the elementary and preschool.
Great.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
All right, next up is Amy Decker, Title I reading at Vermillion Elementary. Lori, you don't have to stand, stay up. You're welcome to if you want.
I'm Amy Decker. I am a graduate of Vermillion High School in 2001. High school, three. I have a bachelor's degree from Ashland University and a master's degree from Indiana University, and this will be my 14th, my 14th year coming up teaching. I've taught previously at Miami Trace and for Avon Lake City Schools.
Great. Thank you. Kara Noon, intervention specialist for the ES.
Hello everyone, my name is Kara Noon, and I have been offered the intervention specialist for the elementary school. I recently graduated from the ECU Firelands back in May, where I received my degree in inclusive early childhood education. This past year, I student taught at Mallox St. Paul in an inclusive first grade classroom, and the year before that, I student taught at Margarita Preschool in an inclusive setting as well. So I've gained a lot of knowledge and insight from those experiences, and for that, I'm grateful because it led me here. I'm looking forward to working with you all, especially with our fabulous staff and students, and I'm super excited to see what this year brings for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Kara. All right, next up is Sarah Zabel, Title I math at Vermillion Elementary School.
Hi, I'm Sarah. This is going to be my third year of teaching. I graduated from the University of Akron back in 2016, and then I got my reading endorsement through Bowling Green State. And then after I graduated, I worked at a charter school in the Parma area for two years teaching full day kindergarten, and then this past year, I was at Amherst City Schools at Powers Elementary doing part-time Title I reading, so I'm very excited to move over more west, so...
Are you around the area?
I live in Lakewood.
Okay.
Yeah, so not terrible of a drive, but just like five minutes further down the road than I was when I was getting off at Amherst.
You should go on to Fred Wade Missing.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you, Sarah. Next up is Katherine Studerman, intervention specialist at Vermillion Elementary.
Hopefully, I probably didn't pronounce it quite right. Close, it's Studerman. Nobody really knows how to pronounce it. So I'm Katherine Studerman. I'm actually going to be at the high school, correct? Possibly?
Yeah, very possible. We're still shifted by that, but yes, high school isn't this morning.
All right. So I just graduated from Kent State University in December. I was doing my student teaching at Carver Falls High School. Then I finished out the school year as a long-term sub at Carver Falls High School, doing like arts, domestic teaching, and biology and chemistry for my long-term sub position. So I'm excited to get my first year of teaching here at Vermillion.
Welcome. All right, next up is Brianna Myers. She's going to be an intervention specialist at Vermillion High School.
I'm Brianna, recent graduate from Ashland University. I've actually been in this, working with special needs individuals for roughly about 14 years, if you drill it all together. I work at a summer camp for primarily kids with autism, ranging from three to four-year-olds all the way to high school. And then I work in a group home for adults with developmental disabilities, and I just had my fourth year doing that. I did my student teaching at Amherst in a mild moderate resource room, and then a self-contained moderate intense classroom, so I learned a lot from my teachers there, and I'm very excited to be at Vermillion.
Thanks, Brianna. And finally, we've got Katherine Kretschmar, fifth grade English Language Arts at the middle school.
Hi, I'm Katie Kretschmar, and I live here locally with my husband and our two kids, and both of our kids are, go to school here in the district. I have 14 years of teaching experience with 10 of them being in the Overland City Schools, where I taught fourth grade, and I was their gifted intervention specialist and our ID coordinator. And then before that, we lived in the Nashville area, where I taught at the second grade level. So I'm just really excited to be here locally and to, well, be in the community that we live in, so, thank you.
Thank you. So that's our new teachers coming into the district, and welcome everyone, and I'm sure that you're going to do a great job. Next up, Andy Stillman is going to talk to us. We're going to have him come in at the beginning of every fall, the fall, winter, and spring seasons and do a review of the staffing and the sports that are going to be going on for the fall. So, Andy?
Thank you, Phil. Let me just get set up here. Okay, lots of data, and I said my promise, Phil, this would be no more than 10, 15 minutes a day. So I'm going to do my done. Yeah, yeah, get it going. Wait till I start. All right. Okay, so just to kind of give a little background, I was asked to come in, as Phil alluded to, beginning of each sport season, give a little bit introduction this year on who our current coaches are in each middle school and high school sport, what they do, who they are, talk a little bit about the numbers. So we're talking about supplements, we're talking about how many coaches we have, and all of those things compared to districts around us. So you'll see some photos, some names I'm sure you'll recognize, and you'll see some graphs and some data. If anybody wants this data, the raw data itself, let me know, I can email that stuff to anyone who wants it, but I sent out a survey to 40 surrounding schools, all of Lorraine County, the entire Sandusky Bay Conference, if we compete, and unfortunately, I only got 14 responses back, which is a little disappointing. I think some of that was, some districts maybe don't want to share all that information, but be that as it may, we've got 14 responses, and it's, at least it gives a decent snapshot of what we're looking at. So we'll start with football here. So we've got Brett Colehand, who's our head coach, and coaches quarterbacks. Bill DiFucci, who coaches offensive line and is, helps Brett with the offense and coordinate the offense, co-offensive coordinator, so calling plays and so forth. Jeff Keck coaches the linebackers on defense and is the defensive coordinator, so he calls the defensive plays each defensive snap. Phil Brickner, who coaches running backs on offense and then helps with the linebackers on defense. Cody Rice coaches wide receivers on offense and helps with defensive backs on defense. He also coordinates a special team, so kickoff, kickoff return, punt, punt return, extra point, extra point block, et cetera. I know this is maybe a lot of jargon for some, but this is just what it is. Tim Bowser, who coaches defensive backs on defense and helps with receivers on offense. Seth Lyons, who coaches our defensive line primarily, and then helps out with the offensive line. Corey Tims, coaches receivers, helps out with the defensive backs, and kind of coordinates the freshman group. Mike DiGiudio, Brian Zabel, and Paul Wersh are all middle school, Saylorway Middle School coaches down there at Saylorway. Okay, getting to supplementals on the football side. So our head coach supplementals, 8,160. We have seven assistant coaches at the high school level. Their average supplement's $4,700. At the middle school, our head coach supplement is 3,500, and there are his two average, or the average of his two assistants is just over 2,800 there. We have, we have a total of 11 coaches from seventh grade through varsity, and of the schools that answered, 61.6% have the same amount or more. So we are in the, you know, the same amount of any other schools that are around us. So how do our supplements kind of stack up? We've got, so we are in the, does that have a laser showing?
It does, yeah.
So we are in this area right here, at 8,000 plus, and almost half of the schools polled are the same amount or more as our current head coach supplement. Down in the bottom left, the assistant supplement, so this is the average, we are the green in the lower left, and 77% of schools are the same or more of a supplement for their assistant coaches. So again, we're right there in the average of the schools polled. Again, Lorraine County and all of Sandusky Bay Conference. If anybody has any questions as we go through this, please don't hesitate to yell at all. Okay. Cheerleading. So Leah Ennis, she is the head coach of not only fall cheerleading, but also winter with basketball. Sarah is her assistant in both seasons, and then Laura is the middle school advisor for the entire year. So we have three coaches. Head coach supplement is 2152, and the average supplement of assistant is 2,600. Now, the numbers seem a little bit odd. You've got to remember that the 2152 is for each season for Leah. So for the fall, she's got 2152, for the winter, she even have 2152. Laura has a higher supplement because her contract, the supplement for the middle school, is a year-long supplement, not broken down, so it's just, it's broken up a little bit different than maybe some of the other ones. We have three coaches, as I said, which 77, 78% of the schools polled have the same or more cheerleading advisors in their district. So again, we're at the middle or lower end there. On the amount of supplements, we are this, on the head coach, we are the 38.5 piece of the pie there, and almost 70% of the schools polled are at our level or higher supplement for the cheerleading, head cheerleading advisor. For the assistant, we're this big 50% piece, and again, about 58% are the same or higher than what we currently have our supplement at the cheerleading. Going on to volleyball. So here are five coaches. Bob Ice is our head coach. Mark Pogacar is his head assistant coach. Becca Baldiff does, coaches the junior varsity level. Stephanie is the freshman coach, and then Kelly does both seventh and eighth grade at the middle school. So she does, takes both supplements on that end. The average volleyball schools have, of the schools polled, we have six positions and five people, so it's a little bit different, but we are right in the middle there, about 40% have at least as many as we do, if not more, coaches. The volleyball supplementals are, as shown, Bob's at 5918 right now. His average assistant at the high school level is 3,400. The middle school, each of those supplements are 3138. And it's just one coach for seventh grade and one coach for eighth grade. Again, Kelly does both. How that stacks up with the coaches, these other districts around us, so we are in this kind of purple shade here at just over, at 5,000 plus, 71.4% are at our level or more. So this is 6,000, this is 7,000 plus, and we're at 5,000 plus in this piece here. The average supplement, we are this gold in the lower left, 71.5 are the same or higher. So I know sometimes the colors are hard to see, but this is 3,000 plus, this piece is 4,000 plus. So between us and greater, we've got that whole big piece of the pie. So again, we are, you're right there, average or, you know, slightly. Okay. Next, boys soccer. Kurt Ennis is our head coach. Rick Boducker is our assistant coach and coaches the junior varsity games in a team. So we have, again, two coaches, which the schools polled, 83.3% have the same or more. One school had three coaches, but nine of the schools that answered have two coaches just like us. Our head coach supplement is 4,663, the assistant is 3,138. So the way that ranks out is as follows, and again, I've got all this raw data if anybody wants to go through it, but we are in the green down here, and so this is 4,000, which is where we are, four plus, five plus, six plus, seven plus. So it was a big chunk, so 91.6% are at our level or higher. And then the assistant, we are the gold piece in the upper left, so we're 3,000 plus, this is 4,000 plus, so that's 60% are at our level or higher on the assistant coach supplement. Girls soccer. Dan O'Brien is our head coach, and Hannah Bartlebay is his assistant. Did I hear a moo-moo? Okay, nice. Okay, so Dan's supplement is 4394, and Hannah is 2959. So we have two total coaches, and the way that stacks up here is 63.7% of schools polled have two coaches or more for their high school programs. We are this green here at 4,000 plus for the head coach, so that's four, five, six, seven K. So that means 100% of the schools polled are at our level or higher, so if anything, they're at the low end there. The assistant coach, similarly, here we are in the bottom right, that's 25%, so that's 2K plus, 3,000 plus, 4,000 plus, so again, 100% are at our level or higher on, in terms of girls soccer. So again, on the, on the lower end, if you want to look at that way. All right. Boys golf. Joe Schneider is our head coach, and new this year, Ken Ryan is coaching the JV team and his assistant. So their supplement's 4394, head coach golf supplement, his assistant is at 2869. So two coaches, and the way that ranks locally is about half. So 46.2% have two coaches for their high school teams. Nobody had more. There were seven schools that had only one coach, and most of those just didn't have a JV team. So we have varsity JV, we have 15 kids there, so it takes two guys. The way the supplements stack up is as such, so we're in the green in the upper left, and so that's 4,000 plus. What Joe's is, this purple is five, and this blue is 6,000 plus. So 61.6% are at our level or higher in terms of supplement. For assistant coach, for Ken, he's this pie here, that's 2,000 plus. 3,000 plus is this gold in the right, so 85.7 at our level or higher. Girls golf. Jeff Olson is our head coach. A lot of these faces and names, I think, are familiar for most everybody here because we're lucky enough to have a lot of in-district coaches, which is fantastic. Because of the girls, the girls program, we've had to hire an assistant coach. She has 14 girls this year, so Brian Pemulinski is his assistant coach, so again, there's two coaches there. Jeff's supplement is at 4304, and Brian is at 2869. And there were a lot of programs that don't have girls golf, so if we look at this, you'll see that we are this green spot here, so that's 4,000, five, and six, so 50% are at our level or higher. Brian is this 2,000 big pie here, this is 3,000, so 100% are at our level or higher on that end. Cross-country. Ryan Ladd is our head coach, Stacy Webb is his assistant, and Terry Anders runs the middle school program. So the supplement's there. Head coach supplement is 4214, assistant is 3,300, and the middle school is at 278. We have three coaches, as I said, between middle school and high school. Compared to around the area, 71.5% have what we have or higher. So four schools had three like us, four schools had four, and there are two schools that have five cross-country coaches. Whoops, someone must have said, okay, here we go. This is cross-country, good, okay. So we are in this green piece here at 4,000 plus, this purple is five, and the blue is six, so 53.9% are at our level of supplement or paid more. This assistant, similarly, we're this piece right here, green is four, so 3,000 or 4,000, so 50% at our level or higher, so we're in the middle on that end. Next is girls tennis. So our head coach, Rachel Miller, and then her assistant is Adam Beckwith. Wasn't able to get much data from girls tennis, so I had to kind of do some personal recon on a couple of local schools. But anyway, Rachel's supplement's at 4214, and Adam's at 2959. So the average of the schools, I was able to get a hold of, their average is 4173, so again, we're right there, and their assistant, girls tennis position, is at 2842, so again, we're right there on par with some of the local schools around us in the conference. Any questions? Not a lot of stuff to bring in, a lot of numbers, I sound like Justin when he gives his reports, so I think Justin could handle that, but...
I think you sounded awesome.
Thanks, Justin, that's, I appreciate that feedback.
So Andy, please put this up on the website, because I think a lot of people ask some of these questions about what salaries are, how many people, and who the coaches are.
Okay.
So if you wouldn't mind putting that up on the website. One of the questions that I know that will get asked though is, how many, what's the ratio of the football coaches to the number of players?
Sure.
And are all of those players that come to a game, are they on the clock at that point?
Right.
Or are they volunteering at the time?
Okay.
Or how does that work?
Good.
Because football is probably one of the more asked about sports.
Sure. Well, football's the front porch in some respects, and in terms of athletics. Football's a little bit different animal because there's so many moving pieces on the field at one time. You've got, you've got 11 players on the field at one time, and they're all doing a little bit different. So if you look at, at the high school level, if you look at eight coaches, head coach and assistants altogether, that are there to 11 kids, it's similar to, say, volleyball, where you've got six girls on the court and there's four coaches there in the high school. So the ratios, I think, are similar if you look at it like that, on top of it, you've got, you know, on the offensive loan, off, alone, offensive line, running backs, quarterbacks, receivers, and there's different jobs and positions, and each of those need, you know, have their own set of, you know, coaches, so... Some of the people you see in football, particularly the sideline or the press box, aren't high school coaches. They might be Mike DiGiudio, or Brian Zabel, or Paul Wersh, who are coaching middle school, but are helping out on a Friday night, helping Brett and his staff out, chart plays, film, you know, those types of things. So they're not really technically getting paid to be there, but they're there because they're part of the program and they want to help, you know, Brett out and so forth. So you'll see that a lot. So yeah, that's, that's kind of, I think, what some people are seeing in terms of football, as far as that goes. Okay? Anything else?
Good information, thanks.
Awesome. Thank you. Again, if you want raw data, let me know, I'll shoot you over an email with all the numbers, but...
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I guess at this point, I'm not used to seeing this many people in the audience. I don't, I don't remember if I told you, it's not required that you stay tonight, but you're welcome to stay, and it's certainly nice to have you here, so...
We usually have the elementary school kids come in and, you know, the citizens of the month, and they'll talk and do the quicks, or that, it's a mad rush for the door, and they do that.
Okay. You'll get used to it, buddy. It's not bad.
Give a score while you're at it.
All right, next item off on my agenda, I just want to give you some updates on some of the capital improvement projects that we're doing in the district this summer. We had a lot of work scheduled, and right now, as you know, when you drove in the parking lot, it's torn up. They're scheduled to be in here next Monday, and they're going to intensely finish before the beginning of school. As you know, we're not going back until after Labor Day this year, so we've got a little bit of a bonus there in terms of time, so the work is all scheduled to be... So the work is all scheduled to be done and you can see, if you took a close look when you drove in today, that some of the areas are excavated a little bit deeper than others and that's where it just has worn out over time and so they'll repair that as well. It will be all one smooth surface when they're done and it will be lined and.
It's not the new culture?
No. I've been asked that a couple of times for Labor Day, I told them, unfortunately not.
For sale.
That's right. So the tennis courts, you might have noticed that they did the, where the poles are, they drilled out the stanchions and they'll put new stanchions in as well. And we are going to resurface the basketball courts and one of the things that we're working on is either the park board hopefully or the boosters. We've talked about that, Andy and I talked about that today. We're going to replace those backboards with some glass backboards. Of course, Babermiller, our head coach, had discussed that with Andy and we thought that that would be a, a nice enhancement to those courts because a lot of kids play on them and those courts, those backboards, I'm sure are the original from when the courts were put up and it'll be nice to modernize that a little bit, get more kids to play on those courts. So that will be done. And finally, what I do have on here is Sailor Way doors. Part of our initiative with the safety enhancement money that we got from the levy was to look at areas of how we can improve the district in terms of safety. And the teachers at Sailor Way have always been concerned that, God forbid, if something were to happen, that there's no way to lock the doors down in that facility, in the upstairs. The downstairs, all the classrooms have some sort of door that they can lock and be a prohibitive type situation, at least with the door, but there's nothing upstairs. So our architects and engineers came in and they looked at it. The teachers would have preferred to have a door on each individual classroom, but if you go up there and you look at the way things are constructed, those were temporary walls that were put in back in an era when the open classroom was a concept, but they really didn't think it through. When we built the elementary building this time, we thought it through and they're collapsible doors and they're able to completely close a classroom off. But there's no way to really adequately put a door on every single classroom there, so the architects and engineers looked at the best way to do it. And there used to be a gate that you could pull down to lock those areas off, but the fire marshal came in and looked at those and deemed that they're really not appropriate or safe to continue, but we could reframe them and redo them and put a new safety door on them. So they started construction on those today. The teaching staff really wasn't expecting that that was going to get done right now. I think that they were, they were hoping that it would, but we didn't realize that we could accelerate it that quickly. So it will be done before the school year starts, which is nice for them. So that's in progress.
So that, at like the end of hallways?
Yeah, so upstairs, there's concrete on both sides, there's the concrete block. And then there was a gate where you could pull those down and in between there, a solid door is going to be put there and it will open from the inside and have the kind of bar that, you know, will open up and close, but you can't get in once you get out.
Okay.
So you'd have to be let back in and so that, that will be much more safe than what it is. It's not perfect, but I think it's a big enhancement to what's, what's there now. And, and I didn't have it on my list here, but we talked about the clinic and starting the clinic here at the high school. They started construction today. So the plan is, and I'm sure it will be done, he came in with the metal framing today and started framing out the clinic, the health clinic through Erie County today, and so that will be done before school opens as well.
And where is that?
That is in the old scene shop, right here, right down the hall. And so we kept a big portion of that scene shop to still be able to, to get things in and out of there. It's a big sized room and we did take a portion of that room and you can, if we have time, if anyone wants to go and take a look at it tonight, to see where it's going to be laid out, I'll be glad to show it to you. So plenty of storage still left there, plenty of room to make scenes and I think we got the best of both worlds there because we're getting a clinic and we're also still have room for storage. I think I mentioned as well too, that they'll be bringing a mobile dental lab onto the property too. So that'll open up through the back, we'll have a separate entrance in the back. They'll, they'll come and plum sinks here within the next week or so and it'll all be done. Any questions on any of those improvements that are, that are going on in the district? A lot over at Sailor Way, same thing, that'll be finished off. If you saw the elementary, I don't know if you had a chance to, to drive through the elementary or through the field house, but those have all been res, not resurfaced, but they put a coating over the top, it was preventative maintenance.
Did they give them respreened? The elementary, as I saw that one.
Okay. Andy, did they do the field house, drive that yet?
Yes.
Okay, although I didn't drive that there, thanks. Okay. I'm going to flip things around here a little bit because I'm going to talk about item number five in my goals. So I'd like to recommend a resolution to approve school service agreement with security voice for the safe school tip line at a cost of one thousand five hundred and sixty-two ninety-two for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year attachment aid.
Hold on.
One second. So I'll just tell you a little bit about this voice line. The Ohio Department of Ed had a tip line, a safe school tip line, and it, it really was not utilized at all. It didn't seem like it was a resource that was, I don't know if it was just a lack of knowledge that we had it there. It was, it was open, it was there, it was on the website, but we talked with this company and we are paying, I think, close to seventeen hundred dollars for this. And it is being paid out of the grant, not the grant, but the bond issue money, the safety levy that we passed. And it would be a one-year trial to see how it goes, but this is a nationalized company that also, in addition to having an open tip line, it offers counseling. So if, if there's a suicide attempt or someone wants to call in, it's totally anonymous and there's a counselor there that's available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And that's a pretty nice service. All of the marketing materials are supplied by this company, there's refrigerator magnets that they give to every family in the district. So everyone's going to know about the availability of this service and we think it's going to be worth it, but we'll see. It's a try.
What we had, is that, so you think the last one we just didn't have?
I just don't think that people had a comfort level of using it. I just don't think it was that, that, I don't know what the word for it is, but.
Lisa and I talked about it, it was ran by the Department of Homeland Security, so it wasn't, I guess it's, that's focused on criminal aspect and not, not school safety, so.
Yeah, this is more of a social and emotional health aspect and more of an open concept and I think that kids and families will be more apt to use it. And the company showed statistics of what their use is and it seems like.
It offers, it offers like a web form, a phone call and a text message, so it encompasses everything I think our students use.
Student or you teach a video, is that a video that's shown throughout the school? I think that is.
I don't remember what, what did they say about that video, Sean? It's a couple of months since we talked to the company. I don't remember what.
I mean, there's a couple of ways to do it. They can do it in a homeroom where the homeroom teacher shows it or they can call every student or every class down and show it in the auditorium.
But if some of the kids get to watch?
Yeah.
They get familiar with that?
And there'll be a lot of advertising, they use a lot of NFL players and a lot of marketing, so there'll be posters that will be posted all over the schools, let the kids know that it's available and it's easy to use.
Any other questions? Call the board, please.
Mr. Haimer?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Steph?
Yes.
Ms. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
The last item on my agenda, and I put this out at your place, is my goals. Every year, you do a evaluation and this is your last, basically your last one for this last school year, prior school year, so. I did some reviews during the school year and so this is the final one for the previous school year. And we've broken it down into four categories, academic performance, staff development, board community, communication and a campus safety and security component. So I'm not going to go through as before every detail, I'm really just kind of giving an overview. So I'll just touch on a few of the categories here tonight. I sent this out to you in advance in the week in review and what the board usually does with this is they'll go and look at it individually and then they'll compare it with each other and you'll come back to me then with a final evaluation at the next board meeting. And we usually talk about that in an executive session with what my score is based on the objectives that are here. So no different this time, I'm just going to touch on a few of these in each category and if you want me to go deeper into any one of them, just stop me now, but let's start with academic performance. There were four components of academic performance. The first one was attend a hundred percent of the district leadership team. Well, that was a pretty easy one to do because we don't do it anymore. Basically, we stopped doing that because it's no longer a requirement of the Ohio Department of Ed and we still do our own strategic planning and that's taken the place of what we've done with, with that particular aspect. B was by the end of the eighteen nineteen school year, all students will demonstrate growth on a district level, writing a rubric using benchmark assessments. So we used those rubrics again and we verified that our goal was reached by, by producing growth within the use of the rubric. C was by the end of the eighteen nineteen school year, we asked the, each teacher to produce a, two SMART goals, an academic and a personal one. So the principals brought each one of their teachers in, they had them to go over those goals with each principal and I think that that was an extra accountability level that's put in by the principals that I think that was helpful for each individual teacher. They might not agree to that, but I, it puts a little bit of extra emphasis on academics and it just makes them think a little bit more about what they need to do to, to help to make our students the best that they can be. So we did follow through with that. And then we had graduate a hundred percent of our seniors. We come very close to that every year, but again, we fell just a little bit short. We were at ninety-six point eight. And I always tell you though, that we follow through with those students and make sure that we get them to graduate at the end. So we did receive an A on the report card for this, this last year in that category. All right, the next area was staff developments, staff relationships. We were in a contract year this last year and I'm happy to say that those contracts are behind us and we did that without attorneys present at the table. That saves the district a lot of money in, in fees. Attorneys, as you know, are at a high dollar rate and they usually like to come in and set up the table and negotiate that with you, but we have been, we've got a good relationship with the VTA and with OC and we were able to work out both contracts and save the district money. OPEZ, the, for the Ohio Principal Evaluation Systems, we do that with our principals every year and we give them timely evaluations and those have to be done a couple of times each year and those were all done. We continue to have a labor relations quarterly meetings, we have a good relationship, as we said, with the VTA and we talk about various things that we can do to improve relationships with them. All of these things that are under professional development, if you want more documentation of what was done under that plan, I'll be glad to give it to you. We've done some extensive developing, professional development through the year, just as we will again this year, so if you'd like any of that, I'll be glad to provide all of the things that are documented there. And building visits, we continue to, to build the rockets or build the things on my own. I went over to the middle school and tried to work with some of the middle school kids when I can and visit all of the buildings as, as much as I can during the school year. Number three is board community objective. As you know, we had a open enrollment policy that we instituted here and we had six components, I think, of that enrollment plan and we really fulfilled the majority of that. We made a slight adjustment, I believe, at the last board meeting because we had some situations where we had some parents that had one sibling that attended and one that didn't get in. But we did institute that open enrollment, we told you ahead of time that we thought we needed to make some changes on that and we did. This part on the YouTube and the sped videos were not totally fulfilled because as you know, we hired Jason Sokol and he was supposed to be part of that initiative and we did some things that I document later on within the documentation here of what Jason and I were able to do together and a lot of what Jason did, but those two things were hard to keep up with because to make a YouTube video is time, it takes quite a bit of time and as the school year rolls on, it's difficult to do. School Zone, Twitter, you know that I'm heavily involved in, in all of those and putting out your bi-monthly articles, I do that all the time. You can read for yourself what's been done. We did do parent university, Twitter account I use and try to build up my followers, continually add content, you can kind of read for yourself, once again, what we've done with website, Facebook, Twitter. And so I won't go through the rest of this, but there's a business advisory council, we did that as well and so that was completed with one hundred percent completion. Final category is campus safety and security. I did mention the two items already tonight. We're putting up the walls, we are doing that hotline and part of the thing that we have to do is to complete a plan through the Department of Homeland Security and that needs to be all checked off, signed off and approved by that Department of Homeland Security. So that was, that was completed. We revise that plan and meet in a crisis team all the time and we think about what we can do to improve that. Biometrics, we said that those would be installed on the doors, those are all in and the administrative staff has been fingerprinted. The staff, when they come back, will now be fingerprinted as well and so those doors will be able to be accessed by the new teachers and all of the teachers that are presently here through their thumb prints or their fingerprints. So they're ready to go, they're working, the administration is already using them and it's just a matter of getting them finished up. The Raptor system, that ran into just a little bit of a glitch getting that ready, but we should hopefully be done by the end of September. We want to make sure that we're one hundred percent completing all of the paperwork that needs to go out with that, the policy has to be lined up, just a lot of details of the use of that, but it's here, it's ready. The training's going to be happening within the next two weeks with the secretaries and that's, that Raptor system is to check for anyone in the community that would possibly have a restraining order. We added that, we met in the principals meeting today and we talked about that possibility because you would need to add that to the system. If someone has a custody problem or a restraining order, that could be checked by the Raptor system as they present their driver's license. The other thing is if there are sex offenders, that will be flagged. So policies, procedures and things that go along with that are pretty involved and we just want to be sure that, we don't want to start something and not have it one hundred percent ready. So part of my goals, but it's an ongoing thing that needs to be done and it will be complete. The drills, we keep them up to date. The cameras, we've added and updated as needed. Light bulbs, fixtures, things like that. The campus looks good. As always, our staff does a good job of maintaining those things throughout the summer and through the school year. So the objectives, the innovation growth objective, that's an extra. So I won't go through that tonight. You can kind of read those on your own. You know that we do have a program going with Mercy. We've written a half a million dollar grant as well for the walking pass. We have gotten money committed from Mercy, and we're working on the possibility of University. So there's still some things that are open-ended, and I'll talk to you a little bit about that a little bit later. But we're hoping that that grant will know by the middle or end of September whether we get the half a million dollar grant. If we get that, then that'll change what we'll do with Mercy or with University, because then that extra money that they are going to give us for the business partnership can be used for something else. So you've seen the banners. Andy and James added the banners along the boulevard there. That's to make things look a little bit nicer. So we're always looking at the ways that we can improve the campus and make things look top-notch. So that's my goal review. And if you have any questions during the month between now and the next board meeting, don't hesitate to ask me. There's a lot of information there. I attached our work on the strategic plan. We've met with the principals, and we further defined what some of these, what our strategic plan needs to look like. And there's more details that I will give you with this as we go. This is just the base of what the plan is and what the core values and promises. And as you can see, we've changed the vision and the mission just slightly in our statements there. So we try to clean up, not clean it up, but improve the language on there.
Okay, good.
Okay? So that's all I've got on the superintendent report.
Okay, next up, the treasurer's report.
Recommend resolution to approve the financial report for July 31, 2019, and has attachment B.
One second.
Just going through some of the numbers here. Looking at revenue first, specifically in the general fund. And again, this is just a short time. This is just going to be through the month of July compared to other years. But through the month of July, we received 29, or 2.965 million in the general fund compared to 2.52 million last year. And then you go on to 4.143 million, and then 5.219 million in fiscal year 17. The discrepancy that you're seeing in the revenue, it's really just due to timing of us receiving our property taxes. In years past, we would request an advance. This year, we didn't receive the advance. And also keep in mind, too, that these numbers were adjusted a little bit. At the end of last year, you remember approving the transfer of funds from federal funds and from the O-16 emergency fund. I pulled those out, and those weren't going to over the flate where our revenues were. But as of now, we're going to be pretty, we're going to be pretty close to collecting the same amount of tax revenue. Moving on to food service through July. Again, this was a little bit of an anomaly here, but we've only received $531 in food service revenue compared to $50,943 last year, $54,636 the year before, and $50,389. It's really how we're reporting our information back to ODE. We're doing it quicker. So what happens is, we're not even allowed a request of reimbursement unless we actually have students buying lunches. So now that we're on time with these things and filing in June and filing in August, we're not going to have anything for the month of July. And so again, we didn't receive a reimbursement from the school nutrition program in July because we didn't sell you lunches. Historically, we received June payments during the month of June, or during the month of July. So again, it's just us cleaning things up a little bit and getting better at our reporting. We don't let the $531 go down. We're okay. And now when we look at all funds for revenue through July, we've received 3.11 million in all funds compared to 2.70 last year, 4.28 the year before, and 5.30 in fiscal year 17. And again, those numbers are changing slightly just because we haven't received advances from Erie County, or we were looking for. So we'll catch all those back up in August. Taking a look at the expenditure side for the general fund, through July, the district has expended 2.14 million in the general fund compared to 1.77 at the same time last year, 2.11 in fiscal year 18, and 2.17 in fiscal year 17. Again, July's expenditures are in line with the three-year historical average. When you take a look at it, I know our numbers are kind of all over the board here a little bit, but the three-year historical average is 2.01. And again, we're at 2.14. So we're in line with where we've been the last three years. There's a little typo there that is not 2.1, so you know. Looking at food service on our expenditure side through July, we've expended $33,199 in food service compared to $21,306 last year, again, 21,244, and 500, it's actually 56.31. So again, the reason we're seeing a little bit of an increase in our expenditures is because, again, we wanted to code some more salaries and start coding other things. Our food service balance, cash balance, is starting to decline, or, you know, starting to increase. We want to bring that down to a more manageable way. So we're coding more things to food service on purpose to bring these numbers down. And then when we look at all funds by expenditures, through July, we've expended 2.55 million from all of our funds compared to 1.9 billion last year, 2.37 million in fiscal year 18, and 2.431 million in fiscal year 17. And so again, what you're seeing is even with the three-year historical average of 2.2 and us spending 2.5, we're slightly higher than we, than our historical average. And the result of that is it's from increases in salaries and increases in health insurance costs. We're going to see that continue throughout the year. And then lastly, we're going to take a look at cash for the general fund. Through July, we have a total of 16.9 million in cash compared to 15.4 million this time last year, 16.0 million in 18, and 17 million in 17. So again, our cash is right in line with where it's been for the most part for the last three years. Looking at the cash in our food service funds through July, district has a total of $345,974 in cash compared to $329,000 in fiscal year 19, $302,000 in fiscal year 18, $233,000 in fiscal year 17. And that's, again, why we're having larger expenditures now. As you see, historically, that cash balance has been increasing. We want to stop that. We don't need to have that much cash in a fund. We can only use it for food service. And then lastly, taking a look at all cash through the month of July, district has a total of $20.2 million in cash from all funds compared to 18.9 in 19, 19.4 in fiscal year 18, and 20.4 in fiscal year 17. So again, over the last four years, we're pretty much right in line with where we are typically with all of our cash, with all of our expenditures, and with our revenue as well. Any questions on that part? And then we just have one month here for our investments. But through the month of July, we earned $35,416 on interest compared to $25,674 last year in July, which is, again, is a difference of $9,742, or 27.5% more in interest this year than we had last year.
Any questions?
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Habenfeld?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Recommend a resolution to add a 030 fund for the purpose of safety and security.
I'll move.
One second.
So after speaking with our gap auditors, what they want to see is, again, it's two forth. The Honor of State Office went back and forth as well. But ultimately, what they're looking for is, instead of us keeping our safety and security levy money in the general fund with a special cost center on it, they want us to put it into a separate fund. And O30 is a special revenue fund, and they just would like to see it out of the general fund and placed there. The reason behind me placing it in the general fund originally is that it includes it in the forecast. By moving it out of the general fund and putting it in the O30 fund, it's not going to show up on the forecast. And so that was the impetus behind that. The Honor of State's Office went back and forth with me a couple times. One person was saying, keep it in the general fund. One person was saying, you know, develop a new fund. And we just thought, you know, to make everything clean, let's just follow it. Let's open it up. And I can do a supplemental forecast for the special safety and security levy we need to.
Any other questions?
Mr. Habenfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Recommend a resolution to transfer all monies from the general fund 001 Special Costs Under 919-S to the 030 fund for safety and security.
One second.
So again, this is just, I need to have board approval to be able to transfer cash. So that was it right there. Any other questions? Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Habenfeld?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Recommend a resolution to accept a donation from the Vermillion Lines Foundation to the VHS National Honor Society in the amount of $250.
I'll move.
One second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Habenfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Next up on the agenda, items for discussion.
Just one comment. I know that over like the past year, it was a pretty big decision for the district to bundle the athletic training services with what Mercy was already providing us. It was a big step after a long relationship with Cleveland Clinic, right? I know it's early, but I've heard like a lot of incredibly positive feedback on the new trainer. So just good to hear, I guess.
That's what we were hoping for.
I am, too.
Yeah. Yeah, we did, as you know, we did occupational therapy, physical therapy, nursing, and speech pathology through Mercy. And actually, we looked at the savings that we had over time over the year. With that, it was over $112,000 we had saved just by forming that partnership with Mercy. And the athletic training, we're getting it at no cost, just like the clinic was giving to us. And same thing with the nurses. The nurses have done a good job in the buildings. We've heard positive things about everything that they've done, too. So I'm glad to hear the same thing about the training so far. Everything's went well with the partnership.
Anything else? Okay, next, item eight. We have a consent agenda. Superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Actions by the Board of Education, adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion unless members of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent request that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the July 8, 2019 regular meeting, attachment C. Number two, memorandum of understanding between the Vermillion Teachers Association and the Vermillion Local School Board of Education, attachment D. The Vermillion Teachers Association and the Vermillion Local Schools Board of Education are parties to a collective bargaining agreement having a term September 1, 2016 through August 31, 2019. Two parties have also fully ratified and approved a successor agreement that will have a term September 1, 2019 through August 31, 2022. The Vermillion Teachers Association, VTA, and the Vermillion Local School Board of Education Board agree to the following in this memorandum of understanding. The board shall establish a head swim co-curricular position for the 2019-2020 school year. The positions shall be compensated at a level, a level 24 with co-curricular index in appendix L of the agreement. The board shall establish assistant swim co-curricular position for the 2019-2020 school year. Those positions shall be compensated at a level 15 of the co-curricular index in appendix L of the agreement. Both positions shall be posted in accordance with article 13 of the agreement. At the conclusion of the 2019-2020 school year, VTA and the board shall review the positions and determine whether or not permanently, to permanently add either or both of the co-curricular listings in appendices of the agreement. Number three, adoption revision to the following district policies and accompanying guidelines as recommended by Niola for the first read. Policy 5113.02, 5610, 5610.03, 6320, 6325, 6605, 7540.02 replacement, 8400, and 8500, attachment E. Number four, approve eight preschool scholarships for low-income families. Number five, approve the following employment actions letter of resignations from, as listed. Number six, one-year limited teacher contract for the 2019-2020 contract year to the following, as listed. Number seven, two-year limited teacher contract for the 2019-2020 contract year to, as listed. Number eight, I'm getting really lazy now. Number eight, one-year classified contract for the 2019-2020 contract year, as listed. Number nine, one-year additional duties contract for the 2019-2020 contract year to the following, as listed. Number 10, one-year supplemental contract for the 2019-2020 contract year to the following, as listed. Number 11, approve Kelly Penn Cost LPDC president and Heidi Riddle secretary, LPDC. Number 12, corrections to additional duties contract for the 2019-2020 previously approved additional steps five and six added to the VTA supplemental salary schedule, as listed.
Man, does that mean I have to sit in the kitchen?
Okay, is there anything that needs to be removed from the consent agenda?
Number nine?
Number nine. This will be removed from the consent agenda for the one-year additional duties contract for 2019-2020. Is there anything else?
I'll move on the consent agenda.
Okay, any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Innes?
Yes.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Habenfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero. I have to look back in.
Eleven, items removed from the consent agenda. Number nine, the Innes for one-year additional duties contract for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Move.
One second. Do we call the roll?
Yeah. Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Stepp?
Yes.
Ms. Innes?
Ms. Stane?
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Mr. Higginson?
Yes.
You're still here?
Okay, we have the dates and location of upcoming board meetings. Located Vermillion High School, one two five zero Sanford Street, Vermillion, unless noted otherwise. Regular meeting Monday, September ninth, two thousand nineteen at seven P M. Regular meeting Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, seven P M. And regular meeting Monday, November eleventh, two thousand nineteen, seven P M.
I think that's, yeah, we'll probably have to change the November meeting. I don't know, we'll see closer which way we want to go with that. You said later is usually better for you?
Yeah, later for the, I maybe with the forecasting period from October and November helps. So I'll do a forecasting November.
Is there school on Columbus? There is.
Recommend a resolution to move into executive sessions for the purpose of management required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
I'll move.
Call the board?
Yep.
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.[1788.32]